Good morning.
There he is. All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I will now call this session of the Seadrill Woolley Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is Thursday, December twenty eighth at nine oh seven AM. We have one item on the agenda today. Uh, number LP twenty nineteen dash zero three seven five. A request for preliminary approval of the proposed plat of Duke's Hill. A planned residential development consisting of one hundred forty-three proposed dwelling units comprised of one hundred thirteen single-family lots and thirty townhouse lots on a mostly undeveloped fifty-nine point seven acre property adjacent to Township Street and connecting to Portobello Avenue and SR nine. Open space and stormwater control measures are proposed. My name is Alex Seidels. I'm an independent hearing examiner whom the city has selected to hold certain hearings like this one. It will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the application is consistent with the city code, comprehensive plan, critical areas ordinance, and subdivision approval criteria. To that end, I received and reviewed twenty-two exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the staff report, the preliminary plat map, landscaping plan, stormwater plan, wetland fish and wildlife report, third-party review of said wetland fish and wildlife report, a traffic impact analysis, environmental review materials, including a CIPA checklist and the city's mitigated determination of non-significance issued May eighteen, comments from the public, comments from various agencies and the city engineer, uh, and well, as well as the applicant's response there too, and the public notice materials associated with this application. I will admit all those exhibits into the record. Should anyone have additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record? Please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because if my decision were to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those that are testifying. I am not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal so that after the record closes, I can produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I think we'll be following this order today, is first, we will hear from city staff who will provide an overview of the proposal along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant to see if there is any additional information they feel myself or members of the public should know in advance of my decision. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And following any public testimony, we will turn back to the city and the applicant as necessary for any response. Everyone wishing to testify will have an opportunity to do so. But just like at an in-person hearing, this will not involve question and answer sessions or objections or multiple speaking opportunities for members of the public. So with that, I think we can get started. Who will be appearing on behalf of the city this morning?
That will be me.
Good morning, Ms. McGowan. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And even though we can all see your name on the video, the official record of today's proceeding is the audio. So would you spell your full name for the audio record, please?
Sure. N I C O L E M C G O W A S.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. And what is your role with the city?
I am the assistant planner with the city of Seadrill Woolly.
And did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I would review in advance of the hearing?
Yes, I will mention I did receive an additional comment on December twenty seventh in advance of the hearing, um, via email, and I sent that to you if we could add that to the exhibit.
Is that the Clark comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have admitted that. I think that was the twenty-second exhibit. So, uh, since we're using letters instead of numbers, I think that would be Exhibit V, uh, is what I'm going to call it in my written decision. So am I up to speed then on everything you've received?
Yes, sir.
Terrific. And do you have any other exhibits today, like a PowerPoint or anything like that that you're gonna use?
No, I do not.
Okay, well, then let's just roll right into your presentation, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I think Alex's overview of this development proposal is pretty good. Hopefully, everyone here got the chance to thoroughly review the stack report for today's hearing if they think it also does well in describing this proposal. Um, this application was first submitted to the city by the RJ group for review in twenty nineteen. And over the years, city staff has worked with the applicant on several revisions of the proposal that come up with this layout. Um, at first, the development proposal was for two hundred and one lots, a hundred and twenty-one of those being single-family and eighty-one of those being townhomes. That's now been reduced down to one hundred forty-three lots. Um, as Alex said, a hundred and thirteen single-family and thirty townhomes. Um, the need for that reduction was mainly due to issues with access while trying to accommodate for some challenging topography on site. Um, mainly steep slopes with rocky terrain. Uh, most of the southern and the eastern edges of the site are largely undevelopable because of those topography challenges and existing critical areas. So you'll see in the layout, um, within the staff report that these areas have been maintained strictly for inactive open space. There are several small wetlands that were delineated on the site and the developer plans to fill those as part of this project and mitigate by way of wetland mitigation banking. Um, however, they have done well in ensuring the development still includes some very nice usable green space areas for the residents, um, which include a trail network and playground area that were well integrated into the site to ensure quick and easy access for recreation for all users of the neighborhood. Um, these usable open spaces were also integrated well into each of the four phases so that the access to recreation is available for residents at each stage of the development. There's a pedestrian trail also proposed at the east edge connecting the alleyway, um, to Cascadia Drive, which will allow pedestrians to access the adjacent city parkland that currently sits undeveloped. Um, the trail design is yet to be determined, and so the city has included a condition that the applicant provide a proposal for that trail design at a later date. Um, you will also see two main connections are proposed for access to the development. One from the east via Portobello Avenue and then one from the west via State Route nine. Um, I'll mention that when Stock Mountain View Estate to the east was originally conceived, the original intention was to extend Cascadia Drive, which was ultimately decided against, I think, due to the topography issues. Um, so this connection was the better choice from engineering and budgeting perspectives. By the completion of Phase Two, these access points will connect and form an arterial route. Um, and the applicant has proposed to reduce the speed limit on State Route nine where that new intersection will meet the highway um, for traffic calming life safety purposes. Uh, that speed limit reduction will be subject to Department of Transportation Review and Approval. Um, it's also been stipulated that there will be no on-street parking allowed along Station Avenue or the extension of Portobello Avenue. Um, aside from that stuff, have included a number of conditions of approval in the staff report that the applicant will need to address appropriately if preliminary plat approval is granted. Um, so I can, I can go through those if you'd like me to, but they're pretty specific. Um, just some things like landscaping plan, we're gonna need to see that at fill-in-grade application. The solid waste department had concerns about whether, um, there will be enough space for garbage and recycling cans um, to serve those thirty townhome lots. So absolute in grade will want to see and a layout showing that there will be enough room. Um, the trail detail. The we have stipulated that construction of the required infrastructure improvement will need to be completed prior to final plat approval. Fire hydrants at four hundred foot intervals along all the road, roadways. Stipulations that all fire department turnaround and shared driveways are to be marked and include no parking signage as specified by the fire department. Uh, no parking signage specifically along Portobello Avenue Station. Um, we will ask that a temporary turnaround be included at the end of Phase One to allow maneuvering room for emergency vehicles while that road is kind of dead-ended there. Um, and a detail for that turnaround is requested at fill-in grade. Um, there will be an HOA, uh, created to maintain the stormwater system infrastructure, open space tracks, the pedestrian trail, the shared driveways, and that document is to be recorded along with the final plat and referenced on the plat map. Similarly, an operations maintenance manual stipulating the city, the HOA, and individual lot owners' responsibility for maintenance of those permanent stormwater facilities to be recorded with final plat. Um, some specifics on the phasing of development. So, um, as I said, final plat approval may only be granted after the site improvements are complete. Um, and then Phases One, Two, Three, and Four will be recorded separately. Civil plans need to include the temporary turnaround for Phase One, the demolition plans for that turnaround, the completed road plans for Phases Two and Three, and the plans for the full of second Phase Four along with all the other required infrastructure improvements. Uh, then the last kind of note to make, I think, so Columbia Street and Hillcrest Drive, they were rejected by nine-one-one. Um, those names duplicate existing road names in Skagit County. Um, so since the creation of the staff report, the applicant has proposed two new road names that were approved by nine-one-one. And those are Mountain Bell Lane and Birdsong Lane. So the plat will be updated to include, include those new names for our final plan application. And staff is working on, um, providing the addresses with respect to these new names, uh, for the applicant to include on the plat map. Um, just like that. That's it for me. You're muted out.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks, Ms. McGowan. Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Uh, I do have some questions for you, but is there anyone else from the city staff who's planning to speak, or are you the only one?
Just me.
Then you get to field all my questions. Lucky you. Um, so, uh, the way I do the questions is I start off with the easy ones and they kind of gradually ramp up from there. So we'll, we'll take it nice and slow at first. Can you walk me through the public notice for the following four events? First, the notice of application, then the city's, um, you know, opportunity to comment on CIPA review, then the notice that CIPA review was finished and that there was gonna be an MDNS, and then finally, the notice for this public hearing.
Yeah, so you pulled that up.
And it's not that I think there was like a problem with public notice, anything like that, but, uh, um, you know, I just wanna make sure that I get all the dates correct.
Right. Okay, so the notice of application and CIPA comment period um, was originally issued March thirtieth of twenty twenty. Um, then the MDNS.
Let me just make sure. Period. Make sure I'm following along here. Um.
I'm on page six of the staff report.
All right. Well, you say it was issued on March thirtieth. But the notice of application here says March sixteenth. And again, I'm not trying to trip you up. It's just, I wanna make sure I, I think the notice of application went out on March sixteen with a comment deadline by March thirty, right?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. And then the notice of development application was also the CIPA comment, uh, uh, period, yeah?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. So then how, how was that? So that's, that's two of the four right there. So how, how was that, um, publicized?
Uh, we did that, we notified, notification by mail to residents and property owners within five hundred feet of the property, uh, posting on land use signs on site, um, on every adjacent roadway, and then we issued the notice in the legal notices section of the Skagit Valley Herald.
Okay, and what was the date of the Skagit Valley Herald publication?
Same day as the date of issuance.
All right, so March sixteen for that. Okay, great. Um, so then the next event would have been the issuance of the MDNS. Uh, what kind of notice did the public get of that?
Uh, similar, uh, method of issuance, so the mailing.
Mail to five hundred. Was, was it posted onsite, the MDNS notice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then published in the paper as well, or?
Yeah.
All right, so the MDNS, and all of that occurred on May eighteen.
Correct.
Okay, and then I know we've had some screw-ups with this, uh, hearing, what with the other hearing examiner. Um, what can you tell me about the public notice for this hearing?
For this hearing, so we sent it, um, let's see, I think I did it slightly in advance of the hearing. Just make sure, like, no screw-ups with it. Uh, let's see, so notice of public hearing was issued December fifteenth.
December fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. And how was that notice publicized?
Uh, the same way. So mail.
Mail.
Posting onsite and in the paper.
Right. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Um. You touched on this during your talk a few minutes ago. The original proposal was, I think, for two hundred and nine lots with no mention of townhouses. Um, and now it's something different. I just wanna make sure that the plan set that I'm looking at is the final one. So like, uh, Exhibit U, uh, the very last exhibit in the packet is a series of site plans. I just wanna make sure that that's the official site plan that I'm being asked to approve.
Yes, it is. That was the latest revision, um, all city staff have reviewed and find what it is.
Great. And I, did I, in my, in my opening remarks, did I get the number and type of lots correct?
Yes, so the current layout shows a hundred and forty-three lots with one hundred thirteen of those single-family and thirty of those townhomes.
Okay. And the open space figures are also correct in this Exhibit U? That's the latest and greatest?
Yes.
Okay, and I realize the, the street names will need to change, but I think that's pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Um, we have comments here by the Department of Ecology and National, uh, Natural Resources and Transportation. Uh, and they all have different concerns. Um, kind of summarizing at the high level, uh, you know, ecology has some questions about this proposed, uh, stormwater impoundment. DNR has questions about forest land conversion, and WashDOT has questions about a connection to, um, uh, public streets, especially, I think, SR nine. Do I need to impose as a condition of approval, you know, that we need all three of those agencies to sign off on the project? You know, we need ecology to figure out whether they need a permit for the dam and issue said permit, DNR to issue its Class Four General, uh, FPA, Force Practices Application, and WashDOT to issue, you know, whatever connection approval it does. Do, do I need to write that in as a condition? Or should I just, you know, let those agencies do their job and not worry about it?
I think it might be a good idea to have the, have the applicant provide proof that they have worked with those agencies to determine what, what it is they need. Um, so, you know, uh, with, what was it? The Department of Ecology, that permit that they'd requested for the stormwater facility, if it met a certain threshold.
Right.
If they weren't sure, um, if it did or not. Um, but in the case that it does, just to prove that they've gone through the correct avenues and gotten.
All right, so I'll consider adding something like that. And we'll certainly give the applicant a chance to, to chime in on that if their team has any thoughts. Um, I don't see a proposed approval condition related to traffic fees or traffic impact fees. Do I need one? And if so, how much should it be for?
Um, traffic impact fees are an expectation at the time of fill-in-grade permit. Um, that's all kind of codified already, so. Um, I don't think a condition would be necessary, um, but the more the merrier.
Well, I, and I try not to load these things up with, you know, too many conditions. If this is something that's going to happen automatically at some later permitting phase, I'm happy to defer it till then. What I don't want is for it to slip through the cracks or like somehow become unenforceable or something because it wasn't a condition of plat approval. Um, so what, what do you think about that, Ms. McGowan? Should I just let it slide for now?
Um, we always like enforceable, so maybe, maybe.
All right. So what would that condition look like? It would look like, you know, um, no no clearing and grading or no construction permit shall be issued until all traffic impact fees have been paid, something to that effect?
Yeah.
All right. And should I do it as a clearing and grading permit, or should I do it as a construction permit?
I would do it under the clearing and grading.
All right, no clearing and grading permit issued till traffic impact fees have been paid. And I think those fees have already been assessed, right? Wasn't the city engineer weighed in? I think in Exhibit D with, and they had a dollar figure, actually, didn't they?
They did, yeah.
All right, um, presumably that won't change 'cause I don't, well, it may change actually if the number of lots changes in the course of this, so maybe we'll, we'll just, we won't write in the goal.
Be assessed at the time of fill-in-grade application.
Yeah, yes.
Engineering comment was from a while ago.
Okay.
Previous revision of the layout, so it may change.
Yeah, all right. So maybe, maybe it shouldn't be for the examiner to calculate the number. It should be for the city engineer to calculate that number. And I think, I'm trying to call up the MDNS here. Didn't the MDNS already have that as a mitigation condition? Let's see here. No, the MDNS, uh, in mitigation measure number six was police mitigation fees, and that's my next item. Um, are there other mitigation fees that I need to worry about? We just talked about traffic. The MDNS mentions police mitigation fees. Um, and the MDNS mitigation measures are already proposed as a condition of approval for the plat. So I don't know that we need to talk about that too much more. My only thought was, are there other fees out there that we need to worry about, like, uh, school impact fees, for example?
Um, those similarly are codified, so I'm, if we're going to add the conditions in for the traffic impact fees, maybe we should just kind of massage that comment to, or that condition to kind of be overarching for all.
All impact fees. Yeah?
Yeah.
Can I just say that, or is that too vague?
Uh, well, thinking now, some of those impact fees don't apply at time of fill-in grade. So.
Well, they certainly would apply if I made them a condition of approval that said they apply at time of fill-in grade. But I worry that in doing so, I'll jam things up, right? Like, you know, like, the fees may not be able to be assessed until some later phase.
Right, that's my thought. So. Yeah, typically, your school impact fee is your fire, your parks, all of that generally is applied at the time of building. Um, that's how we've, um, practiced that.
Well, so maybe, maybe I'm overcomplicating things. If this is all going to be paid, you know, at some point down the road. And the nice thing about writing it in as a preliminary plat approval condition is it gives the city a lot more, uh, you know, enforcement levers. You know, if you don't pay your fees, your whole plat, you know, is, is destroyed. So that's, that's a pretty, you know, heavy hammer to give the city. Uh, but maybe, maybe just the normal process would be best in this case, um, just so I'm not, uh, putting the cart before the horse, huh?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe we'll just strike that out here. And trust the process to play out on its own. And, and I've seen it done both ways. There are plenty of jurisdictions that do, you know, load all of that stuff on the front end at the preliminary plat. Um, but I, I don't think the way that you're suggesting is, is a bad way. Um, I, I saw.
Got teeth to make sure those impact fees are paid as it's codified.
All right, and I saw someone from the applicant team wanting to jump in, um, and perhaps prevent me from loading them up with a bunch of fees that would be difficult to pay right now. Applicant team, you'll certainly have a chance to comment here in just a moment. Um, and we'll turn back to the city, so we can, we can certainly discuss this issue in more detail. Um, the CIPA checklist and the stormwater plan have both been revised. I don't see the originals. I don't know that I need to. I just want to know whether whatever concerns the city had with the originals have been addressed in the revised versions.
They have been, yeah.
Can you tell me what the, you know, what was the reason for revising that stuff?
Um, mostly because of the, there was a little bit of ambiguity with some of the answers, um, at the get-go. We just wanted a little bit more clarification on specifics, certain questions. Um, I don't know off the, I jumped into this review of this long plat well after that was originally submitted. So I only got to see the most recent version of it. I don't recall what exactly was changed.
Well, and certainly, you know, I review the project that's in front of me now, whatever, you know, not whatever the original proposal was. Uh, but I've just found that sometimes it can be instructive if there were, you know, concerns that were raised early on, and then you get a revised version. Usually, the revised version fixes the concerns. Sometimes the revised version does not. So I just wanna make sure that nothing has slipped through the cracks here. Uh, maybe I'll just put it to you like this. Do you have any concerns about the stormwater plan as it currently exists?
I don't. Um, the stormwater plan and the CIPA checklist as well were both done, uh, when the development was proposed at a higher density. And so with those things in mind, um, especially with the CIPA checklist, I think that we did our review for a more robust application per se. And so now that we've lessened the impact a little bit, not worried about that. And, and so we'll be working with the Department of Ecology to get the proper permitting for that stormwater infrastructure as well, um, which will also be reviewed, reviewed by the city engineer. So. No, no concerns on that.
Can you walk me through the open space calculations? How do I know the appropriate amount of open space to order here?
Yeah, so. Let me bring up Exhibit, so I can work with the numbers here. Okay, so for Phase One, we have open space two, um, as usable open space. Um, the requirement for usable open space is ten percent. And then twenty percent can be inactive open. And so you'll see on, let's see. Exhibit six of the preliminary plat. Um, they have shown that they have ten point three percent of the usable open space.
Exhibit six, what do we mean here?
Uh, sorry, so in the, in the pages of the plat, uh, the pages numbered exhibit.
All right, so I have it all as one enormous PDF, which makes it.
Oh, that's right, okay, so.
Harder for me to jump from page to page. All right, let's see here. I don't suppose you could give me a PDF page number?
Yeah, let's see.
All right, let's see.
Yeah, I apologize that it.
Then it's all right. No, I'm, I'm getting it right there. Uh, so I am on, uh, what's called Exhibit Six. I see, you know, colorful squares, usable, developable, nonusable, open space. Okay? All right, so.
So, looking at Phase One, um, so essentially for Phase Plat, what we require is that the minimum open space, both usable and inactive, be provided at that, uh, ratio for each phase, with the exception of Phase Four in this case, because once you've completed Phase Four, now you've got the full development at that twenty-ten square. So. So each phase has shown that they've met the minimum requirement, twenty percent open space for that phase, um, and then ten percent usable open space for that.
And so this is helpful with the shading here on Exhibit Six, because my next question was gonna be, are they counting the stormwater facilities, especially the pond, as part of the open space? And it looks like the answer is no.
No, they're not. Not as usable open space. I think the, the only there's the, there's a trail around the pond that they're counting, I think, as inactive open space there. So it's just the open two and, um, those small open spaces between the townhome lots that are one B, one C, one D, and one E.
Okay, all right. And the numbers do seem to check out here. I'm just kind of comparing each of these phases with, with the exception, as you say, of Phase Four, but in Phase Four, they can reach back to the earlier phases. Okay, all right, that all seems to make sense. Um, I have a note here. I'm not even sure why I put this in my notes. Uh, are we using the standard zoning setbacks here, or are we doing alternative setbacks? I have a note here, I'm not even sure why I put this in my notes. Uh, are we using the standard zoning setbacks here, or are we doing alternative setbacks? Yeah, that's what I think too. Yeah, I'm not sure why I even put that in. Um, and design review, I assume happens at the building permit stage, not something for the hearing examiner to worry about?
Right.
Excellent. All right, so a few of the public comments um raised as one of the issues. Um, the school district's capacity to handle the new students that will be moving in as a result of this subdivision. What is the plan for managing that impact? Is that something that's done through school impact fees? Is that something I need to manage, perhaps by reducing the number of units? How, how do we, how do we protect the schools from being overburdened here?
Yeah, so the school impact fees and the admin fees are meant to mitigate these impacts. Of large developments like this. Um, the school essentially, they set their own impact fee. Um, we honestly just incorporated into our comprehensive plan, um, updating it on a year-to-year basis. With what the number is that they provide, that they will need. So.
That's something I think you said that happens at the construction permit phase?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that, that occurs automatically. I don't need to worry, you know, that, you know, there will be a school impact that somehow like gets missed or something like that?
Correct, yeah, there will. Codified, so.
Plan, I will not, I will not interfere with the plan. You've mentioned this, uh, you know, pedestrian trail, but it, you said it goes around the pond, but there's another one that connects to an existing. Trail network, I think off to the east. Um, I'm a little bit confused frankly on how the trails work. What's going on with trails?
Sure, I can help you find.
Do we have a nice map of all, of, of the pedestrian component of it?
Yes, looking for which page it's on in preliminary plat. Interesting, okay, so if you're looking at exhibit four. That page within the preliminary plat, that will show their proposed location for the pedestrian trail. That connects from the alley to Cascadia Drive at the east.
A twelve-foot maintenance access path?
Do you see the little red dotted line just um to the left of that? There's open five, open space five, and then.
Open space five, oh, I see, pedestrian trail, I was looking too far east, okay, there it is. Pedestrian trail connection to Cascadia Drive, all right, um. What is going on with that? Why do we need a pedestrian trail connection?
Well, the idea there is to make sure that that city park isn't um just kind of left. Blocked off by this development. We wanted some kind of. Um, future connection for people to be able to use that once that park is developed.
Where will the park be going?
So, um, if you see, I believe it's track. C two. Stock Mountain View State.
Okay. That's, that whole thing is going to be a city park?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like there is another subdivision to the south?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe, um, because this is, this is always a section in my decisions anyways. Can you explain to me a little bit more about the surrounding area? I mean, you've got a little chart here on page two of the staff report, um. But I, I, I don't feel like I have a very strong sense of like what the surrounding neighborhood is.
Yeah, so most of the area to the north of develop, of the development is very lightly. Developed, you know, couple single family homes on pasture land. Largely used for agriculture. Um, to. The south, give me a moment.
Like in the staff report, it says to the south is undeveloped pasture land, but actually there's this future city park there as well.
Right, that's directly to the south, um. And I'm curious if I maybe made a mistake with. My direction. Oh, goodness, okay.
Yeah, I'll occasionally get like site plans where like, you know, up is not north, and I'm like, oh, this is, this is terrible. This isn't like going to lead to trouble.
Yes. So. If you're looking at. The preliminary plat, it shows. Kind of rotated, so north is.
Nightmare, so wait, 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 which page are you on here of the preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat, uh, the whole thing is, is oriented that way. Um, so. With north kind of.
Yeah, off to the right.
Off to the right, so. If you're looking at where the city park is, that's east, so.
So the park is not actually to the south, I was wrong.
No, it's not to the south.
It's, it's actually, um. To the east, huh?
Yeah, so actually to the south is undeveloped land, it's pretty forested agriculture. They're similar to the north.
And to the, so that makes more sense with your staff report, undeveloped city parkland is to the east, in fact. But then further to the east of that, there's another, you know, existing subdivision as well.
Correct.
Okay, all right, now I think I've really got it. Okay, terrific. Um, and then the current site condition, you know, it's, it's mostly forest land, hence DNR's concern. Uh, I think there is some development though, is there not?
Sprinkled in, yes, so to the north, we have Bramble Lane, and, and that is outside of city limits, but um. We have. Three or four single-family residences off of that.
Well, actually, on the subject property.
On the subject property, oh, yes, sorry, so we do have a manufactured home and uh, I believe there's a shop there as well.
Good.
Um, and one outbuilding on site, those are going to be removed as part of this project.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, I think that's clear enough. All right, we come now to what I think is the most difficult aspect uh of this proposal, at least from my point of view. Um, you know, there's a bunch of wetlands on site, there's even more off-site. Um, you know, there's various buffer encroachments on some of them, but not all of them, but the long and the short of it is, uh, we have. I think up to seven wetlands. On the site uh that will be filled, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um. As I read the critical areas ordinance, maybe I'd better call it up here. As I read the critical areas ordinance, there's a difference between encroaching on a wetland buffer versus. Actually filling in the wetland itself. Right, so let's see here, if I go to seventeen point six five. Point two forty. A regulated wetland or its required buffer. Can only be altered, let me make sure I'm uh. Sorry, so I'm in uh two thirty. Seventeen point six five point two thirty. Alteration of wetlands. A regulated wetland or its required buffer can only be altered if the wetland site assessment shows that the proposed alteration does not degrade. The quantitative and qualitative functioning of the wetland. Or any degradation can be adequately mitigated to protect or compensate for the wetland functions that are lost. Any alteration approved pursuant to this section shall include mitigation necessary to mitigate the impacts of the proposed alteration on the wetland as described in section. Two forty.
Yeah, so if you read further down in the wetland mitigation standards.
Yes, you know, even two forty.
Yeah, so if you go. Two forty L. Um, so this is the alternative compensation project, so kind of what we found in this case. Was the wetlands that they are planning to fill are small. And not very. Uh, don't provide. Great functional habitat for. The ecosystem. Um, and actually would be. Better to use mitigation banking. So they can bank into creation of a, of a larger wetland, or several larger wetlands. That would actually have a better. Ecosystem function in a different location.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, um. So I guess that it's not the case, um, because my, my fear was. You know, maybe a wetland can only be filled in under a reasonable use exception, which I, you know. A, it hasn't been applied for, and B, I frankly don't see how the reasonable use exception criteria could possibly be met here. Um, but it sounds like there is this alternative scheme. Uh, in which a wetland can be filled in, provided there's compensation, and we don't need to go through the reasonable use process, right?
Correct.
Okay, um. And is there any requirement to follow, you know, a mitigation sequence that says, you know, before we just go straight to compensation? You know, maybe we should try to avoid having to do that by, for example, not filling the wetlands, even if that means, you know, moving some of our lots around. Is there any requirement to go through a process like that?
No requirement for that sort of process, um. Within the. Critical areas assessment, um, where they go through kind of the recommendations by their. Environmental consultant, and then it is reviewed by our third-party person. We rely on our third-party um environmental consultant to tell us essentially what the best case scenario for development would be. Um, and so. The, the mitigation banking was found to be kind of the best, the best case scenario here. Because of the fact that these wetlands are small and don't really have very. Impact to the environment.
All right, well, let's see here, um. So I just found another page of notes here that I have to call up, sorry about this, um. So when you say the third-party review, um, is that exhibit O? Is that where I find the third-party review? This is the seven K environmental uh techni- technical memorandum?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one.
So, uh, you know, that exhibit expresses pretty serious concerns. Uh, with the original wetland report, you know, a, a whole wetlands are simply missing from it. Um, so we get a revised wetland report, exhibit P. In your view, does exhibit P fully respond to the conditions, uh, to the concerns raised in exhibit O, the third-party review?
Yes. I found email correspondence, and I apologize if I didn't include those in the exhibits. Um, from seven K environmental, just stating that this does meet their concern.
Oh, okay, so uh, the third-party reviewer has seen the latest and greatest exhibit P version of all of this stuff?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and, and did they have any further comments or recommendations that I need to be aware of?
They did not.
Okay.
They agreed with the assessment. In the revised version.
Well, at the risk of making your job harder, Ms. McGowan, um, I would like to see. Uh, the, the emailed thoughts from seven K uh on exhibit P.
Okay.
That just helps me close the loop, you know, because I see, you know, objections raised by the third-party reviewer. I see an attempt to fix those objections. I would really like to, you know, see the third-party reviewer saying like, you know, yes, objection's fixed, or maybe objection's fixed. If you do this one extra thing, or I just, I, I just, I just wanna, it's not that I think like you're wrong or something like that, uh, you know, and your word is certainly good enough for me. But, you know, I have to write all this stuff up, I have to cite. You know, the record is how I make my decision, and it's just much easier if I can like quote verbatim, for example, from the, from the third-party reviewer. So I think what we'll do is we'll hold the record open when we're done here, and you can compile those emails. Um, you can stick them all into one PDF and, and send it to me. I don't know that I need like, you know, eight different new exhibits from eight different emails. Um, but that would, that would uh help reassure me a little bit, because you know, just in looking at this, I'm like. I'm confused too, because like there's so many different versions of this, and like, and none of the two, no, no two wetland reports agree with one another. And I ended up getting frustrated by the end of this. I was like, I don't think I understand where all the wetlands are and, and what their status is. So if, if there was like a, you know, a competent biologist to, you know, kind of walk me through that, I would, I would feel much happier. Speaking of which, uh, the. Uh, the preliminary plat shows some of the wetlands that we've been talking about. And in particular, I think I was looking at exhibit. Two. Yeah, Wetland Impact Legend, yeah, there it is, um. So, you know, I had this kind of frustrating experience, like I don't know, you know, where the wetlands are, no two biologists can seem to agree on the wetlands. But here's exhibit two, the plat map, which purports to show, you know, the wetlands. Is it your understanding, Ms. McGowan, that the wetlands shown on this exhibit two, you know, represent the latest, you know, kind of consensus from the biologists about wetlands? Or are there still wetlands missing that I haven't seen yet here on exhibit two?
This exhibit two does match what was shown in the revised wetland.
Okay, so exhibit two.
Correct.
Is the latest uh, um, from exhibit P, which was kind of the final word, and exhibit P, you're gonna send me some emails from a third-party reviewer saying that exhibit P. You know, finally did a good job, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let me just take one last look here at the critical areas ordinance then, um. Because, you know, kind of my ultimate nightmare here is when I'm looking at the code and I find something, I'm like, oh, it sure would have been nice to ask Ms. McGowan about this, and then you're, you're not there. Because we've closed the record. You know, I do take your point that there was that uh subsection L two forty L uh for. Wetlands that basically introduces this whole alternative scheme where we don't worry so much about the buffers and so forth, and like, maybe it's actually good to develop one big wetland instead of several small ones. At the same time, there is a mitigation sequence, you know, in section one sixty of the critical areas ordinance. Preferred mitigation sequence. Mitigation includes avoiding, minimizing, or compensating for adverse impacts to regulated critical areas or their buffers. The preferred sequence of mitigation is defined below, and this mitigation sequence is very familiar, you know, Sidro Willie didn't. You know, invent this, that the mitigation sequence is very similar everywhere you go. The bottom line is, you know, first you try to avoid it, then you try to minimize it, then you try to rectify it. Um, then you try to reduce it over time, and only then, if none of that is possible, only then do you get to compensation. But here it seems like there was this rush to compensation. I, I didn't see any attempt to like avoid the wetlands or anything like that. So why is it consistent with the preferred mitigation sequence to go straight to compensation?
Yeah, I think the, the reason, and the applicant may be able to speak a little bit more to this, but I think it was. With these wetlands in place and the topography issues that they were. Having, it was kind of really restricting what was going to be developable without. Um, filling the wetlands. So it was found, you know. Filling the wetlands would be best from a development perspective for them to be able to get potentially the. Full, full development, uh.
Well, imagine that, Ms. McGowan, filling the wetlands is always best from a development perspective, but a development perspective is not the only perspective I need to worry about here, um. So, so my question to you is, you know, where's the attempt to avoid having to do that?
I don't think there was an attempt on the applicant and to avoid. Wetlands impact besides the mitigation.
So doesn't that give us kind of a problem here, you know, because the, the mitigation sequence is not like a menu of options, and you pick whichever one tastes the best. Uh, it's a sequence that you're supposed to handle in order. An applicant, I see you, you know, pressing your. And applicant, I see you, you know, pressing your raise hand button. I imagine this is, you know, not your favorite part of the hearing to listen to. You will have a chance to address all these concerns. In fact, you will be next. This is my, my final subject for Ms. McGowan, so we're almost there applicant. But the city's opinion is important to me, and I, I want to hear what she thinks about this. And Ms. McGowan, I realize I'm like ambushing you with all of this stuff.
No, it's okay.
But this stuff matters, you know, I, I have to, you know, I decide these projects based on what the code says. And I see some things in the code here that have given me concern. Um, but you're the planner, so I just, I want to know whether these things in the code give you concern as well, or if my concern is misplaced, or, or just how you think I should handle this.
Yeah, I think with this being the preferred mitigation sequence, it's, it's a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous saying that this is what we need to be held to. Essentially, it's not saying language like is required to follow this mitigation sequence.
True.
Just preferred, and then in, in this case, you know, we, we wanted to looking at with, um, the housing crisis, like we are interested in having housing developed in the city. And creating an area that could be by filling those wetlands that are of minimal impact to the environment and replacing it with something bigger and better elsewhere. We found that it was kind of the best case scenario in all aspects, just for us to be able to get the housing that we need for the city. Um, for developer to be able to construct, um, with budget in mind, and the best way that they could, um. But yeah, I would say it's just the preferred mitigation sequence, not required.
All right, um, I appreciate your thoughts on that. Let me just check my notes here if I had any saved rounds for you. I guess there was, and I'm sorry to like jump from subject to subject here, you know, what it was is, you know, I, I had a bunch of, um, notes from October when we were originally gonna do this thing, uh, and then, um, you know, handed off to the other hearing examiner, and then when we came back in December, I made new notes, so like now I've got like two sets of notes to consult. So, uh, just briefly to go back to stormwater, um. I thought I saw somewhere in one of the public comments a concern about which version of the stormwater manual was being used, um.
Well, likely from the city engineer.
Yeah, I don't think so. The city engineer, you'd think would, would have a pretty firm grasp on that, but let me just ask you, which version of the stormwater manual are we using here?
The, uh, twenty nineteen, I believe is the latest.
Twenty nineteen, and it's, it's your assessment and the city engineers that we are compliant, or, or, you know, feasibly can comply with the twenty nineteen manual?
City engineer does review that.
All right, um.
A little out of my ballpark.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, and I'm not gonna ask you to, uh, wade into, although, you know, sometimes if, if we get a big stormwater dispute in these things, the city engineer will show up and talk stormwater with us. I don't know that that's necessary here, because my question was more procedural, which is like, you know, what version of the manual are we doing? Let me just consult exhibit D real quick to see if the store, if the city engineer had any thoughts for us on that. I think the city engineer was mostly concerned with traffic impact. Yes, indeed. Well, hmm, do we need to hear from the city engineer, um, about which version of the manual will be used? And whether there's any issues with that, or, you know, wha- wha- what is your understanding of? Um. Of the, of the proposal's potential to comply with the manual?
Um, so at the time of fill-in grade permit, David reviews according to the twenty nineteen. So if there are any issues with that, it'll be a simple comment letter saying, hey, you are not compliant with the twenty nineteen manual, fix it.
Right, and then you can't build anything, all right. So kind of on that note, exhibit R, the preliminary stormwater plan, has, you know, various recommendations at the end. Do I need to make those recommendations, conditions of approval, or does it make more sense to defer, you know, any kind of action on that to the, you know, final review stage when, when David is gonna look at this?
I would defer, um, just given that I expect them to, the developer, to jump on fill-in grade as soon as they can, but in the case that we're under a new manual by the time they apply, um, I don't want it to be kind of binding.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
All right, okay, that makes sense. Okay, and then I did find out one more note on one more subject, um. You know, there, there was a lot of public comment on, uh, traffic concerns. We do have a TIA here. TIA, you know, informs us that this project by itself will not cause any of the roads or intersections to, you know, fail their level of service and, you know, no safety concerns or anything like that. But I did notice in the TIA, which is exhibit N, that one of the nearby intersections is proj- is projected to be at level of service F by the year twenty twenty five, even under baseline conditions. All right, so we're gonna have a road problem, even if this thing never got built. That being the case, does approving this plat make a bad condition worse? Yes, it's already gonna fail. Yes, that's not the fault of this developer. But now that it's going to fail, you know, is it really wise to be adding more traffic on top of this known failure that is coming our way?
I think it'll be a push in the direction to make the upgrades that have been planned, um. With it going in that direction to begin with, I think this will kind of be the push to do that. Um, the city has budgeted for those improvements and has plans to make them. I apologize, I don't know by when was the plan. I can look in the transportation element, the comp plan, because it is in the it might take me a moment to find that.
Well, I don't necessarily want you to do that on the fly here. I'd, I'd rather get, you know, a, a slower but more thorough answer than like, you know, a fast answer that misses some important element. It, you know, if there's something in the, uh, you know, in the capital plan or somewhere else that has, you know, already budgeted for this, that would go a long way towards alleviating my concerns and presumably the concerns of the public as well. Um, do, do you want a little time to like, send me something after the hearing, you know, explaining, you know, what is the plan for upgrading these roads and intersections?
Yeah, that would be good.
Because, because the TIA, so far as I understand its projections, just assumed that like, nothing new would be, but like, the population would continue to grow, but not necessarily any road improvements put in. If it turns out there will be road improvements, you know, maybe that fixes things. All right, so, um, let's do this. Uh, I'll hold open the record for your thoughts on, um, the capital plan or, or any other plan to improve, uh, the intersections that are projected to fail. I think we're also holding open the record uh, so you can get me the, uh, final, you know, wetland seal of approval from the third party, those emails that you mentioned. I don't think I've asked you for anything else, um. Okay, all right, and I keep promising that, you know, this is my last question, and that's my last question, um. But I think this time it really is the last question. All right, thank you so much, Ms. McGowan. You've been in the hot seat long enough, uh, let's take you out of it and get you some help here, um. We'll turn now to the applicant team and see if they have any comments on anything that we've been discussing, or if there's anything else about the project they feel that I should know, or members of the public. So, uh, I've seen several folks from the applicant team attempting to participate. Now is your chance to do so. Uh, who would like to go first?
Um, I would like to go first.
All right, I see someone's screen name, uh, as Devon is, uh, attempting to speak. Uh, Ms. Devon, can you turn on your camera? If you have.
I have been trying to turn it on for the past hour and I'm having a technical problem and.
All right, uh, that's fine. Um, it's certainly not a requirement to have a, a camera, so we can proceed without. I do need to swear you in though, so I will imagine that you are raising your right hand here. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and can you state and spell your full name for the audio record, please?
Yes, my name is Devon Caines, D E V O N, C A I N E S.
C A I N E S, is that spelling correct?
Correct, yes, correct.
All right, Ms. Caines, and what is your role with this project, please?
I am a senior project manager with the RJ Group, representing the applicant.
Okay, all right, what would you like me to know this morning, Ms. Caines?
Um, I took a couple notes during our discussion, so we'll be revisiting a few items. First, I just wanted to touch on, as Nicole mentioned, that the plat has been interviewed with the city of Sidro Woolley going back to twenty nineteen. We've had quite a bit of back and forth. Um, revising the design, a lot of which had to do with back and forth related to the critical areas findings. Um, and ultimately that the design you see today not only proposes wetland fill-in mitigation, but also avoidance of wetland Y, which is a significant, the most significant and largest wetland that you can see on the property, um.
All right, hold on here, Ms. Caines, let me take a look at wetland Y. As I was saying, uh, one of the things I struggled with here was familiarizing myself with all these wetlands in light of the reports that kept disagreeing with each other. All right, so, uh, show me what, so I see wetland Y uh, over on the, uh, north end of the property there.
Yes, that's correct.
Open four.
Correct, so the large finding that, um, you know, that there was a seven K environmental report, the third party review, that ultimately our team had to go do some additional field work and respond to, and the result of that was the identification of wetland Y. Um, which is a, like, you can see is sign- significantly larger than any of the other identified wetlands. Um, this resulted in a huge change in our design here, where we pulled our proposed stormwater plan uh, more interior to the site and off of that northern boundary in order to avoid wetland Y. Um, at this time, we're proposing a very small amount of fill on two kind of projecting fingers of that wetland down to the south side with a little bit of buffer impact. Um, but this was a significant effort in order to, to propose some avoidance. So this is one of the biggest reasons that the plat changed, the number of lots changed. Um, in addition to some topography struggles we were having on the south side of our site, so just wanted to highlight that, that that was really the big thing that happened between the seven K environmental review and then the subsequent response that Nicole's going to get, um, the proof of approval by seven K for you to take a look at.
Okay.
Um.
Pretty helpful. I, I do see, you know, Ms. Caines, some other, you know, fairly substantial wetlands here. For example, there's a kind of a wetland complex here consisting of wetlands two, wetland A three, and wetland C, uh, just to the east of Columbia Street, um. And, you know, I, I can see that some of the lots have been kind of shifted over to the west, so it's not too encroach, but, you know, some of the lots, you know, numbers one oh two through, through one oh six are just kind of right in the middle of all that.
Yes, that is correct.
Why this, you know, generous treatment towards wetland Y, but this, you know, less generous treatment toward wetland C and wetland A three?
We wanted to, um, leave the integrity of the larger wetland intact as best as we could, and as Nicole also mentioned, we've been working with Sidro Woolley and planning to propose some much-needed um, housing in this community, and we're pushing to find a solution that allowed us to maximize the density of this proposal as well as balance some of those critical areas issues. So, as Nicole indicated, we were motivated in order to keep the density up, um, you know, as she mentioned, the original proposal was two hundred plus lots. Um, so looking at that loss of density and trying to meet that, that, um, extreme need in this community balance with critical areas sort of got us to where we are, where yes, we are proposing some fill of some wetlands, um, but also, also proposing avoidance. Um, I also would like to mention that these are category three and four wetlands, um, not the highest functioning, uh, wetland categories. So that is sort of the, the balance that was struck, so to speak.
Tell me a little bit more, Ms. Caines, about the compensation plan. You know, is it, is it just, you know, banking credits, you just pay into a fund? Or is there gonna be an actual physical project somewhere? What is the plan here for mitigating for these wetlands that are proposed to be filled?
Yeah, so in this case, we work with a local wetland bank. We actually have an agreement in place and have already put some down payment toward working with the Nukachamps Wetland Mitigation Bank. In this case, we are able to pay for credits and the bank, um, does the actual effort of creation. Um, and that, that is the, that is the plan in this case.
How did you know the amount to pay?
We have proposed, well, it's, it's not fully paid. Um, the bank has a credit debit ratio that they propose, um, where we have to work with them to show the total amount that we're proposing to fill, and then, um, we'll work with our critical areas specialist, you know, to make sure all of that is correct and consistent with our other permits. Um, and then we contact the bank and they have a price per credit that they charge. And that is.
In, in your mind, is it something that the hearing examiner needs to review? How many credits are being, you know, purchased here? How many should have been purchased? Is, is that something that is on my desk to review?
In my opinion, I, I would say no, because we, you know, have all of these other hooks and requirements for wetland permitting process that we have to go through with, you know, ecology and the core respectively, so.
But if it's not on my desk, then whose desk is it on? You know, who, who is kind of checking your work here so that, you know, if seventeen credits are required, you seventeen credits are paid, and maybe, maybe seventeen is not the right number, maybe it's actually twenty or something like that. Who is reviewing all of that, if not me?
Their Department of Ecology and the Army Corps are looking at what our mitigation is for our proposed fill, so they will not approve fill without mitigation in place.
Okay. So maybe, you know, I'm sure you heard me talking with Ms. McGowan about the possibility of, uh, writing in as a condition of approval for the plat that any of these outside agencies have to sign off as well. So, for example, DNR and the FPA, Wash Dot and the Road Connections, and then we were talking about ecology and the stormwater system, you know, that, the, um, the pond that's proposed.
Right.
If ecology and the Army Corps are also going to weigh in on your wetland mitigation banking scheme, you know, does it make sense in your mind for me to make the, uh, to make it a condition of approval that, um, those agencies have to sign off, you know, prior to, let's say, probably in this case, clearing and grading?
Um, I think that that is a pretty typical condition that you see in cases like this, um, that that be provided to the city, um. You know, of course, it's in our interest that we, we have those permits in place before we were ever, ever did such an activity.
Yeah, you know, yeah, so in some sense, this is like much ado about nothing, right? Because like, you know, if you were filling in a wetland without a permit, you know, you'd be in trouble, even if you weren't doing a plat, right? Like, if this was already plotted, you couldn't just go out and do that. Um, but the reason I like to talk about this here at the preliminary plat stage is, you know, A, if you're doing something wrong, um, you know, maybe I can head you off at the pass, so you don't get into that situation, but B, you know, if it's a condition of plat approval, that gives the city some enforcement mechanisms, so we're not just, you know, reliant on like, you know, ecology or, or Army Corps. So I think it does make some sense. There is some public benefit is gained here by, uh, you know, addressing this at the plat phase, in, instead of just saying like, hey, let's, you know, let's, let's wait for ecology and the corps to deal with it, I, you know, not a city.
Sure, well, yeah, I think I can agree with that, and as I said, because it is also in our interest to ensure that our permits are in place, and we intend to do so anyway, I see
Right.
no disadvantage of that being.
Yeah, this, this is not intended to put a huge burden on you, and I don't.
Yeah, it doesn't make us do anything we are, don't have to already take care of.
All right, let's see, okay, uh, so I I don't think I had any further questions about wetlands for you, Ms. Cane, but maybe you had some further testimony on wetlands for me?
Um, I have nothing further regarding the wetlands. I did want to talk about a couple of the other conditions that were discussed um, in the discussion with the city. I think this was resolved, I just wanted to bring up the um, idea of having a condition related to the payment of impact fees and just echo that it is codified and required that we pay those impact fees at certain increments, um. Specifically, Sidro Woolley Municipal Code, section fifteen sixty one ten says that fees shall generally be paid at the time of issuance of building permits, rather than at the time of subdivision or construction of unoccupied infrastructure that is not generating immediate impacts. So I just wanted to echo that. So I just wanted to echo that, you know, we are required to pay fees with vertical building permit issuance, because it is those homes and use of the site that result in impacts that need to be paid and that that is codified for in City of Cedar Woolley's code.
No, I certainly don't want to do anything that's against the code. You said fifteen point sixty one? I don't see that section.
Fifteen point six zero point one one zero.
Fif- uh fifteen point six zero point one one zero. That's more like it. Payment of fees.
So the third paragraph down is the, the quote that I just read off to you.
Building permits. Is this true of all impact fees though, like like traffic, schools, parks, police, all of that?
Those are all typically paid with the issuance of building permits.
Okay. Alright, well, uh, and I think uh Ms. McGowan had already kind of talked me into doing it that way anyway, isn't, you know? How nice that the way she intended to do it is consistent with the code always. That's a good citation, Ms. Caines. I certainly appreciate that. Um, so that that is helpful. Okay, what else would you like me to know?
Um, I wanted to talk about language that you may intend to use regarding the FPA condition. I guess I just, one, I did see that comment that was issued regarding that and maybe Rob Janicki can chime in a little bit because he actually knows FPA is up and down. Um, the site is, there is some forest, but it also is largely farm field. Um, so I guess whatever, however you choose to word the condition, I would just ask that it be um said in some sort of a way where it's like that we meet whatever the requirements are versus actual like any specific permit process?
Yeah, right, yes. If, for example, like, let's say, uh, let's say for instance, DNR is not the approval authority for a, for a class four general FPA. Let's say it's the city is the approval authority. It would sure be awkward if I'd written in there like, you know, DNR has to issue this thing and DNR is not the one who does it. Yeah, so I.
That's exactly what I mean, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's not my intention to, you know, uh, to start laying landmines in your path here uh, uh, along those lines. You know, this will all be, to the extent the agency did, you know, determines that it's required. Same goes for ecology and that stormwater pond. If there's no need for a permit, I'm not gonna make you get a permit. That's ridiculous.
That's, yeah, I was just looking for that type of language.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll be, I'll, 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 I'll fix it up, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, you know what? Since there is a concern about this, um, we're leaving the record open anyways for Ms. McGowan to supply two things, which were the third-party review of wetlands and then uh something from the, you know, capital improvement plan or some other transportation plan uh to deal with the traffic things. Why don't we leave the record open for you as well? Um, and if you and Ms. McGowan want to work together on this, that'd be great. You can send me some proposed conditional language. Um, getting at what I'm trying to achieve here, which is if you need a permit from a DNR, if you need a permit from Wash Dot, if you need approval from ecology and the Army Corps, you know, I want those, you know, approvals to, I I want you to show the city that you got those, or else I want to see from those agencies that they don't think you need them. Would you be willing to draft some proposed conditional language for me that gets at what I'm trying to achieve in a way that doesn't kind of set you up for failure?
Yeah, absolutely. I think Nicole and I could work on that together. Um, okay, so again, I'm catching them all, DOE, Army Corps. Then the forest practice application.
Yeah, right, yeah, DNR and the FPA, Wash Dot and the Road Connections.
Wash Dot.
Yeah, ecology and the stormwater pond.
Army Corps.
Ecology and Army Corps on the wetland filling. Th- those all strike me as agencies that might have to give you a permit for some of what you're proposing here. Um, and I just.
Absolutely, I'd be happy.
I want to make sure that the plat doesn't move forward without those approvals, if they are necessary.
Great.
Alright, yeah, so yeah, if you, you're welcome to suggest language, um, and then I'll, I'll take a look at whatever you send me. Okay, uh, what else have you got for me, Ms. Caines?
Um, I guess the last thing I'd just like to add again, just highlighting the fact that we are looking forward to helping to address the housing crisis and the Cedar Woolley community and greater, greater Skagit County area by providing single-family housing and also an attached housing form in the form of townhomes. Um, and um, you know, we are motivated to serve our community and help address that need through the construction of this plat. I didn't have anything specifically further, but wanted to ask if Rob Janicki did.
Yeah, this is Rob Janicki.
Alright, sir, if you're planning to testify, I will swear you in. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today will be the truth?
Yes.
Alright, sir, and I see the spelling of your name on my screen, R O B, last name J A N I C K I. Is that spelling correct?
Correct.
Alright, Mr. Janicki, what is your role with the project?
Uh, I am one of the owners.
Okay. What would you like me to know today, sir?
Uh, first of all, Devin covered most of the other stuff, uh, great job. And I just wanted to uh make sure that your conditions around the phasing uh gives the city some flexibility. Uh, and the specific thing we're looking at doing is getting a fill-in grade permit for phases one and two. Build, potentially building the road system for one and two, but only getting final plat for phase one. And then at some later date, getting final plat for phase two, so that uh, as long as the construction is complete for the phase, you could have unfinished construction on the, another phase that's supporting the first phase, but doesn't necessarily have to be receiving final plat approval, uh, just from a um like to create the appropriate utilities and traffic flow and things like that.
Yeah, I I think that's already kind of baked in here, because I'm being asked to give preliminary approval to the whole thing. And then, you know, if you want to, you know, chunk it out uh and take it to city council one phase at a time, I don't see any reason why you would be unable to do that. Did you have some specific, you know, concern about?
As long as it, it, there wasn't a condition in the preliminary plat that required a a phase to be fully, a future phase to be fully constructed. In other words, if we end up deciding to build the road instead of the roundabout at the end of phase one, that the city would have the flexibility to uh allow that.
Uh, I mean, I, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't work. Let me just take a look at Ms. McGowan's proposed conditions of approval. Did you see something in there that that worried you?
No, no, I just didn't want to have an additional condition added as part of the.
Oh, no, I I'm, I wasn't contemplating anything like that. No, I I'm aware that, you know, your intent is to, you know, build it in different phases and and perhaps do it out of order if you so choose. And I don't see any reason why that would be a problem.
Okay, okay, good.
Alright, what else have you got for me, Mr. Janicki?
Um, well, this probably again won't be a condition of the plat, but uh Nicole did bring up the idea that all of the construction, all of the uh, physical construction would need to be done prior to final plat approval. And I wanted to make sure that.
Wait, what? Wait, I I don't understand. The construction would be done prior to plat approval? How would that work?
Well, normally you have to have all of your roads and utilities and everything done before they will give you final plat.
That, is that true? I didn't know that.
Um, Nicole, did you want to, you had mentioned that, would you clarify? What, what I'm trying to get at is, is there could be things we want to bond for instead of actually complete. And I just wanted to make sure that as a condition of preliminary plat, that we would have the, the ability to bond.
Well, yeah, so I do see, I do see something in proposed condition thirteen, the pro- the proponent shall submit a final plat map for each phase to the city for review and approval after site improvements are completed, approved and or financially secured. Is that the condition that you're worried about right now?
Yes.
Alright. And and what are you, what are you hoping that that will say?
Uh, Devin?
It actually says exactly what we want it to say, because and or financially secured. So Rob, your uh, your worry is, is no need. We have, Nicole and I worked on this in advance, but thank you.
Okay. Apologize for that.
No, no, no worries. I I I love it when a plan comes together. Um, what else have you got, Mr. Janicki?
Uh, that's it. Uh, we're very excited to be moving forward on this project finally. And uh, it's unfortunate that we're losing seventy lots uh of potential development, uh, but I think the, the, the trade-off for protecting the critical areas um, um, was the balance that we needed to meet.
Alright, thank you so much for your testimony, Mr. Janicki, and you for yours, Ms. Caines. Are there any other members of the applicant team who wish to testify? Not seeing anyone, if if you do, you gotta, you know, take some affirmative action here. You gotta, you know, do the raise hand button or turn on your microphone or your camera or whatever. Not seeing anyone else from the applicant team, so it is now open to public testimony. Do we have any members of the public or any other government agency who wishes to testify today? If so, this is your chance. You can turn on your camera, you can turn on your, your microphone or or do the raise hand button. But you have to do something so that I know you want to speak. I'm not gonna call name by name here. So uh, uh, take an action if you wish to testify at this time. Not seeing any activity here. Um, and Ms. McGowan, I take it there's like nobody banging on the door of your office trying to testify? There's nobody in person today?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so I I focus this, I am about to end the hearing today. This is your final chance if you wish to testify. I know there was some fair amount of public interest on this. Kind of surprised not to see anybody here. Okay, alright, I will conclude that there is no public testimony at the hearing today. Um, normally I would now go back to the applicant in the city for response to public testimony. We didn't get any. Um, so I guess, you know, just kind of final thoughts, you know, Ms. McGowan, did you hear anything from the applicant that would change any of your recommended conditions of approval or or any of your other analysis?
Uh, no, um, I was thankful for the, for the bit of update with the, with their how they handled the wetland Y situation.
Yeah, uh, you know, because I've been, uh, uh, this is why they were trying to jump in, because I say, oh, they didn't even try to avoid, you know, any of the impacts, but.
Yeah, and I apologize.
I was wrong. Well, but but see, you know, I wasn't there either for the earlier phases of this. So that's why sometimes it can be hap- you know, helpful to see the earlier uh, um, plans. Alright, um. It sounded to me as if any objections the applicant had to propose conditions, you know, have already been addressed. Um, I am considering, as I mentioned, putting in this uh proposed condition for um, you know, other agency approvals as needed. So Ms. McGowan and Ms. Caines, if you can work together on uh, you know, sending me some proposed language for that, I'll certainly take a look at it. Um, the other thing I'm waiting for, other two things I'm waiting for are that transportation stuff from you, Ms. McGowan and the uh, the last word from our third-party wetland reviewers. So once I have those documents, the proposed conditions, the wetland review and the transportation stuff, at that point, I will declare the record closed. Once the record is closed, I have, I believe, ten working days uh, under the um, state subdivision statute to produce my working decision. Uh, I do have a lot of other hearings on my plate right now, but I think I should be able to get that back to you uh, within the ten working day turnaround. You know, we've got the holiday and whatnot, so who knows when it will actually come. And part of that is on you guys. The faster you get me these documents, the sooner the record closes. So, um, with that, I I thank you all for coming out today and walking me through this. Um, I I I really feel like I have a much firmer grasp on things. You know, I came into this a little bit frustrated by the number of wetland reports and the disagreements between them. Um, I think I've got a handle on wetlands and the other issues as well. So I really appreciate everybody uh taking the time to patiently walk me through all of this. So with that, um, we are adjourned and I hope you all have a good rest of your day. Uh, Ms. McGowan, please send me uh the audio recording of today's hearing. Doesn't have to be today. I'm not gonna start working on anything today. I don't, I don't have the other documents yet. But at your convenience, please send me the audio for this.
Will do.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.